Want to mute you because you've got some background coming out.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and here we go with Monday night city council meeting, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Roll, could you take roll call, please?
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Luther.
Yes.
Traxler.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Sutherland. Okay, we'll get back to this, we'll get back to Eric, we know you're out there. Go ahead, Lowell.
Sweeney.
Here.
Schwab.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Flue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Summerfeld.
Here.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and welcome, we don't have any special recognitions this evening, approval of minutes, if anybody'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Okay, I got Ryland Erdman with his hand up, and Robin Sweeney with a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. We don't have any public hearings tonight, public comments, this is an opportunity for the public if they'd like to speak, now you can do so, I will turn this back over to Mr. Idy.
And I see Mr. Boland has his hand up, I'm gonna, Trevor, I'm gonna turn you on. Trevor, you go ahead and speak. We gotta unmute you here, you're, go ahead, Trevor.
Trevor Boland, Oakley Realty, in regards to the proposed planned unit development from Two Rivers Investments for a twelve unit building at two three, two zero three Ninth Street. If you have any questions, I am more than happy to take those. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Trevor, and Randy Idy's our IT guy tonight, so he's moving on up. Anybody, anybody else like to comment in public comments? Last call for public comments.
So again, it's, it's, it's a star nine if you're on your phone, or if you're on Zoom, if you just hover your cursor near the bottom by your participant information, you should, should see a raised hand.
Okay, last call for public comments. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna keep on going with the rest of our meeting. Under five A unfinished business, proposed modification of the mayor's proclamation declaration of an emergency in the city of Menominee. And that would just be a, an extension, I will turn this over to Ben Ludeman, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So this is on your agenda, the initial emergency proclamation that the mayor had, we have a sunset provision on it for April twenty sixth. We didn't really know what the climate would be on that. As you all are likely aware, there was a new order that was issued, which is going to start immediately after the current cigarette home order, that will be going till May twenty sixth. I'm looking for the best way to extend it out. What we want to do is be as cohesive as possible with Dunn County, as we want to tie it into their emergency proclamation, so that's what we are proposing doing, basically. If there's any questions initially, I can answer those, I can let you know the motion that we're looking for on it. But basically, what it would do is tie Menominee's emergency proclamation, could extend the length to April twenty sixth, and we would tie it in for as long as the Dunn County emergency declaration is in effect, unless earlier rescinded by Menominee City Council.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody, and? Any questions for Ben or myself? Fortunately, we haven't had to use it, so I'm thankful for that, I'm thankful we live where we live, but if anybody'd like to make a motion to approve, now would be the time to do so. Robin Sweeney with a motion, and Leish Webb's with a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed, opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to. Six A, proposed resolution petitioning the office of the commissioner of railroads for railroad crossing on Packer Drive. And in front of you, you can see a overview of the area, and I'll turn this over to Charlie or Lowell, or Randy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna share the screen with everybody, just to kind of give a general area what we're looking at, and I'll bring up. The actual, the map showing where this railroad would cross, so right now, if you're looking at my screen, believe you can see it, there's I ninety four running east and west along the bottom, County Road B running north and south. The railroad's running right here by my cursor, and the actual crossing, what we'll have is a spur line coming up for Brown Strauss, and it'll cross Packer, right where the cursor is, and it'll extend up into their site. So the, the resolution is for the crossing here, and then I'll see if I can, I'm gonna stop sharing this, and then bring up another side screen that shows the actual site layout. So we'll get to that in a second, just bear with me. So the actual sign layout should be in front of you, it's a vertical kind of picture, and this is the crossing on Packer, we talked about, and this is where the resolution's addressing this, this rail spur coming off the main line, and this is where Brown Strauss Steel would have a lay down area, and this is where their building would be. So they've, they've already purchased the land, we have a developer's agreement with them, this, this resolution would help get that crossing in place.
No, thank you, Mr. Idy. So I think that pretty well explains it, any questions? Okay, this is for Brown Strauss, the, the development out there, and I think it's a good thing, and I think everything looks to be in order. Ben just asked me if we could have a voice vote, I know when people raise their hand, but because some of the recording is only in audio, so if anybody would like to make a motion to approve this, if they could raise your hand and then give us a voice vote, that'd be great. Jeff, oh, I'm sorry, Nate?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion approving the resolution for the commission of railroads and the railroad crossing on Packer Drive.
Okay, thank you, Nate, is there a second to that motion? Robin Sweeney, go ahead.
I make a second to. Adopt this.
Okay, second to Nate's motion, thank you, any other questions? Okay, on, oh, go ahead, Ryland.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do we know what the traffic count is on that road, and I assume that the neighboring businesses have been notified of this, so it's not gonna be a surprise to them whenever a railroad crossing shows up down the street?
Yeah, I'll turn that over to Charlie Jones.
Yeah, there's not a large number, there's a couple of small businesses there, I believe most of them know Ryland, but we will be notifying them as this petition goes through with the, with the railroad. The crossings will be only to, they're bringing in, I believe it's three to four rail cars at a time, and they will not stop on their, on the road, they'll just cross it, so they're gonna be pushing the cars across the road into the site. So it's gonna be, we're estimating five, ten minutes at a time, it's not a lot of time, so we will certainly be talking to the rest of the businesses out there, but there is, I think, three small businesses on the other side of that track that probably come this way.
Hi, Charlie, this is Lowell, but also there is two exits out of there, I mean, that road does loop, so those.
Yeah, it goes back to Badger, and again, the large amount, the larger business at the end of the road is Cardinal Blast, but they go across the main line track out of Badger, and they'll come down that way. And then we've got. It used to be Ambassador Steel, not sure the name of it now, and there was an Napa Auto Parts and a plastics, well, there's a body, and there's a, it's old.
Chad, Chad is. Oh, Chad, go ahead, please.
I'm just curious if we know when we're gonna, they're gonna start breaking ground on this?
They were gonna start right away with the shutdown and the virus affecting us, I think they're looking at probably starting that to lose fall, or their original goal is to break ground early, so they're back about a couple months now.
Understandable.
Okay, thank you, everybody, any more discussion? Okay. The motion made by Nate and seconded by Robin Sweeney for the railroad crossing on Packer Drive, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you, it passes. Moving on to six B, proposed planned unit development from Two Rivers Investments LLC for a twelve unit building at two thousand three Ninth Street East. And we have Randy, Mr. Idy's gonna bring up a location on the map, so you can see that. Mr. Idy?
Yep, thanks, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna. Go back to Google Maps and. Share that with you, and everybody's gonna get dizzy when they watch this, but I'm gonna try to bring it down. This PUD is on the south side of town, on Ninth Street and Twenty First Avenue. If I can zoom in there. So Galloway Homes area apartment, so there's four buildings there right now, this is Ninth Street running north and south, Twenty First Avenue running east and west, and the location where the, the developers proposing to put a twelve unit apartment complexes, right where my cursor is. And then I am going to. Bring up actually the site of that, if I can here. We'll move off of Brown Strauss. And we'll go over to. Right here, so you can see, I believe you can see the four units that are existing, and then in blue is the fifth building that this PUD is, is trying to build, the developers trying to build. So the PUD process, if the council sort chooses it, is to. Submit this to plan commission for their recommendation, and then back here to city council for a public hearing, and a date to be determined right now.
And Randy just said, on this, the plan commission actually holds a hearing too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, and the plan commission would hold a hearing too, and, and then a hearing back at city council, so I don't, Mr. Mayor, if anybody has any questions, I can.
This is Lowell, maybe I'll just put out there that the dates we're probably looking at are May twenty sixth, which is a Tuesday for the plan commission, and then it could come back to, to council hearing.
Good, thank you, Mr. Idy and Mr. Prangy, any questions, any discussion? Mayor, you had your hand up?
Sir, um, and I don't know if Trevor can hear me, but is he looking for a particular clientele, is this gonna be suitable for senior living, like no steps and that kind of stuff?
Spend the rules if you want.
Okay, Mary, good question, I'm gonna ask the council for a motion to waive the rules.
I make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Mary, and can you, okay, seconded by Ryland Erdman? Okay, and so all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, opposed, okay, good, okay, Trevor, if you'd like to answer a couple quick, that quick question from Mary, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay, Mary?
Yes.
So it is a twelve unit, the corner units will be two bed, one bath, the rest of them will be one bedroom, one bath, the center, I believe it is four, we are gonna do with basically ADA accessibility for those, it is a one story building. It, it'll be a little different than what's there for the Galloway Apartments, I can't say it'll be exact, you know, for the clientele, that does have some real development vouchers there in, in that facility. If you ask me how many it is, Mary, I wouldn't be able to tell you, but I believe it's eight, if I was to, seven to eight. And so it'll be a little different, you know, it, it won't garner the rents you typically would see if it was a standalone building, just because it's so close to the proximity of, of the other, but I think of the aesthetics and everything will, will blend in very well. And so I guess your clientele really is gonna be, you know, I would say young professionals, to maybe individuals that have been recently divorced, which is pretty typical clientele, or those that are retired.
Thank you, Trevor, any other questions? Any other questions for Trevor? Okay, thank you, Trevor. Okay. So we can move this on for if anybody would like to make a motion to move it on to the plan commission? Okay, I see Chad, Chad Slu with your hand up, you wanna make a voice, a voice move, voice vote?
I'd like to make a motion to move this PUD to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you, Chad, is there a second to that motion? Okay, I see Jeff Luther's got your hand up, can you make a voice?
Yep. I'll make a, I'll second that motion, to move this on to the plan commission.
Okay, it's been a motion by Chad Slu, seconded by Jeff Luther, any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Thank you. Next piece of business, under six C. Consideration of a clean energy resolution for the city of Menominee, discussion and possible resolution and adoption. So what we're, what we're looking at, or what you have in front of you, is a clean energy by twenty fifty resolution, and I know it's gonna take some work on the city's behalf in the next thirty years, but I think it's a movement forward, I think it's a positive. So I would appreciate. The support on this, and from there, we'll go forward, so you have in front of you, if anybody'd like to make a motion, or we can talk about this?
Mr. Mayor, this is Lowell, I think this afternoon, we did send out to you, I approximately, this was approximately, I didn't count them, up to fifteen, I think, emails that were received prior to the council meeting in support of the resolution, so if you didn't get a chance to look at them, they should be in your inbox, so if you want to take a dive.
Okay, and I see Leish Webb's with your hand up, and Ryland Lee, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adapt the, this resolution.
Okay, motion by Leish Webb's, Ryland, you've got your hand up?
Yep, I'd like to second his motion.
Okay, thank you, any discussion?
Real quick.
Okay, go ahead, Nate.
Sorry to interrupt, I didn't raise my hand digitally, but I do want to just say that it was really cool to see all the support from, you know, the citizens of Menominee, just to show their opinion and send us some emails, you know, I just hope that we can continue that type of involvement, and keep developing the relationship between the citizens and all the council members in the city of Menominee. Great.
Well said, Nate, and I see hands up, Jan, Traxler, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to echo what Nathan said, we had, oh, I had several phone calls and many, many emails, and it's wonderful, thank you.
Good, thank you, and Mary, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanna say that when I saw this come through in the council packet, I was very happy, and I think it is very much the right thing to do, you know, in this time, we have really no control over anything, it seems, but we're looking at this, and I know it, it's a resolution. But we're also, we're also stating that we want to do something that will better our environment, and I, I think this is a great thing.
Sorry, and, and thank you, Mary, and Ryland, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to just mention that I think that going forward with this, we should also look at some of the low cost things that we can do with our building code, to make, you know, new, new houses and commercial buildings more streamlined for adopting renewable energy. But that this is more than just. This interacts with other goals that we have, like cleaning up the lake, that, you know, the blue green algae in the lake comes from warmer water and warmer weather, and will achieve multiple goals if we, you know, through. This resolution, I feel.
Well, I appreciate that, I agree with you, Ryland, and Mary, you've got your hand up?
And I just wanna follow up on what Ryland said, you know, I, in talking to some of the folks that are behind this resolution, you know, also like hybrid cars, you know, for either police or staff, or some, you know, to work that into our fleet, where we could also benefit from that.
Okay, thank you, Mary, I know we're moving many, many issues forward to get to this point by twenty fifty, I'm just gonna ask Eric, can, if you want to say anything, because you've been muted?
At this time, no.
Okay, thank you, Eric, I was just checking in to make sure you're still there, well, I think, Ryland, you bring up a good point, too, with, you know, some of the city buildings and some of the city codes and things along those lines, so I think once we get moving on this, we'll adapt many things over to, to be fossil free by twenty fifty, so I think it's a good thing. With that being said, we had a motion by Leish Webb's, and seconded by Ryland Erdman, is there any additional discussion? Okay, then I would guess all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Next piece of business, under six D, review of bids for a Broadway pedestrian crossing near, near Cherry Avenue, that would be on. It'd be North Broadway and Cherry Avenue, and I'll turn this over to Charlie Schneit, Charlie Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy's kinda showing you, I think, where the location is, this is the rapid flashing beacon truck for our, our crossing that we talked about, North Broadway, it's gonna be just south of Cherry Street on Broadway, the reason we selected that location.
Could Charlie be a little bit closer to a mic, please? I'm sorry. They, it's again, just south of Cherry Avenue on Broadway, the reason we selected that location, there's a lot of commercial driveways and intersections there, and when we put a crossing in, we, we limit right or left turns into some of those properties, so this was a location that did not impact any of the existing commercial driveways or any of the intersections. We bid the workout, it does, the city has already authorized and purchased the rapid flashing.
I gotta, I gotta, I gotta display it, Charlie, I can bring it.
Okay, the beacons, this bid was up for the putting in the conduit and doing the spinner islands, and redoing the sidewalk, Randy's kinda got it up there on the screen right now, we received three bids, the bids range from thirty four thousand five hundred thirty nine dollars to forty eight thousand two hundred and twenty one dollars. Our estimate was just under thirty five thousand, we are recommending award to the low bid, which is Pember Companies, and we would recommend the award to Pember contingent upon receipt of bond and insurance.
Like, can Mr. Mayor, if I, please. Just to remind the council, I think both of you know, Jan probably knows, we've had a lot of requests from the, the residents who live on Elm, to try to get that safety crossing, we've had a couple petitions received here at city, city hall, and trying to get some safe crossing there, so this has a, has a little bit of a history, and, and we think this crossing will help give them some options, especially if they're going south to the library, or south to the trails, or south to the downtown area, it's gonna be an easier option for them. If they wanna go north, they'll probably just have to go, you know, the other block to the south to go north and cross safely if they wish, so we think this will help, it doesn't answer all of the people's questions or all their concerns, but it, I think it puts us a step in the right direction.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Idy, and Mr. Jones, council, do you have any questions? Okay, we'd be looking for a motion to accept one of the bids, does anybody wanna make a motion to that?
Actually, Pember is busy.
It'd be, we'd be a motion to accept Pember's.
Yes, sir.
Bid, so.
Pember Companies for the bid of thirty four thousand five hundred thirty nine dollars.
Thank you. Contingent. Okay, thank you, Leish Webb's?
Are you muted, Lee?
You're still muted, Lee.
There you go.
Okay, I'll make the motion to award the contract to Primer.
Okay, sounds good, Leish Webb's with a motion to award the bid to Pember, is there a second to that motion, Robin? Robin Sweeney, I've got your hand up, can you do a voice vote, please?
I make a motion, a second, I second the motion to award it to Pember Construction.
Great, okay. And you wanna confirm with the contingencies attached to that, Robin?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Contingencies.
Okay, so any additional discussion? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote on this, Lowell, Prangy, please.
Draxler?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwab?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Flue?
Oh.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Area, motion carries nine to one.
Okay, thank you, moving on to six E. Proposed six five one ordinance amendment eliminating through highway status of, at Elm Avenue, Wilson Street, at Ninth Street East, Fourteenth Avenue East, discussion. Mr. Idy's gonna pull that up on the screen for you.
So thanks, Mr. Mayor, so on the screen, you can see we got, we have two intersections, I think the mayor talked about. Ninth Street and Fourteenth Avenue East, we're also looking at Elm Avenue and Wilson Street, we'll take on the Ninth Street one first, Ninth Street and Fourth, Fourteenth Avenue, or I wanna zoom this in a little bit. So these are two intersections, they both are two way stops only, in this one, Ninth Street runs north and south, and Fourteenth Avenue runs east and west, Dick's floor is here, we have about nine thousand, just over nine thousand vehicles traveling north and south per day on Ninth Street. Around three thousand coming off of Fourteenth Avenue per day, it's just, in this case, it's been a busy intersection, especially early in the morning, and it's late in the day, trying to make turns coming off of Fourteenth Avenue. So for discussion only, we wanted to put this on the council's radar as a possible location for a four way stop, I know we're stopping a lot of vehicles going north and south, but it helps get this movement, traffic coming off of Fourteenth, especially making a left turn and turning south, and we do get a lot of bus movement coming off at the end of the day, coming from the middle school and elementary school. This is one intersection, Mr. Mayor, we can go to the other one, or do you wanna just get discussion on this one first, or you want to talk?
I guess it's up to you, Mr. Idy.
Let, let me go to the other one, too, so you can just have them both as a, as a, they both have a little different story. At Wilson Street and Elm Avenue, this is North Menominee, and in this case. Wilson, Wilson Street has the most traffic, and right now, that stops, Elm Avenue is a thoroughfare running east and west, and it was going through the Purple Hill Church, the American Lutheran Home, thank you, Lowell. So there is traffic running here, but it is significantly lower, I think it's less than a thousand versus about five or four or five thousand running north and south here on Wilson. In this case, it's kind of reversed, we're stopping. Which would seem like the most thoroughfare traffic on Wilson Street running north and south, and then Elm Avenue is not stopping, we've had cases and close calls in this intersection, we put flags on the stop signs, reminding people on Wilson to stop, but we think the right solution here is to make it a four way, inner, four way stop intersection. And we think that'll help. Just reduce the potential for accidents, especially somebody coming down Elm or are going on Wilson, I'm sorry, and just not stopping, not a lot of traffic here, but we think it'll help. Reduce potential for, for accidents, we've run this by both the police department and the fire department, they're supportive of both. Of both options, or four way stops, but again, we have it on the agenda for discussion, and then, Mr. Mayor, I don't know which one, do you want to take one at a time, or just see if the other doesn't?
Well, let's take, let, let's take the Ninth Street one first for discussion, especially, I, I think Mary can attest to the fact that school buses and so forth, it's a, it's a tough road there for school buses to enter onto Ninth Street. for school buses to enter onto Ninth Street and so forth. I know it's gonna be a little bit of a learning curve for everybody to get used to. The other thing that I mentioned that this is only on tonight for discussion so that we can talk this through and then decide if it's worthy of drawing up an ordinance to have this done. So we'll take the Ninth Street one first. Mary, you've got your hand up?
I will agree that in the school buses, you can sit there if you're trying, if you're coming on Dairyland Road and you need to take a left-hand turn. I've gotten so that I go way out of my way to avoid that intersection because you can sit there and, no kidding, for a good five minutes or more. And so it is a pain. My one concern, and I'm for this, but my one concern would be with that much traffic, are we gonna have like a major backup every rush hour, so to speak?
Turn that over to Charlie Jones.
I think it'll handle it, Mary. We have stop signs up on Main and Ninth already with this number of traffic coming through there. The other thing we wanted to look at is that the intersection is wide enough where we could bring two lanes up to stop. So it'll move a lot more traffic through. So I think we're gonna look at the configuration if the council thinks this is a good idea. But yeah, it is a lot of traffic, but you can certainly run it with a four-way with that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Eddie?
Yeah, if I could add, Mr. Mayor, so one possible solution, and this could be four or five years down the road, is, is to get a roundabout in that area. And it's much easier to go from a four-way stop to a roundabout than just taking a two-way stop. So this would, at least in our thoughts, may be the, maybe the first step of several to get to a roundabout. I mean, there's not, we have to get some property and more space there. Look at it and maybe there's a grant that comes up sometime down the road. But we think starting with a four-way stop will help that flow coming off of Dairyland.
The one thing I think we maybe forgot to mention is what we'll look at with the four-way stop, being we come back to is removing some parking on Ninth. There is parking on both sides now at winter time. It gets extremely narrow. So I think we'd probably be looking at limiting some of the parking, which may get us to the two lanes at the stop sign.
This is Lowell. We did drive at Rainy United last week, and there is no parking already by Lambert's Town in that country. So it's really just going north of their ways that we would impact people. Some is removed already. You got Chad?
Okay, Chad, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I was initially opposed to the adding of the four-way stop sign. I talked about fifteen people, and there's, I think there seems to be overwhelming support for it.
Well, thank you for that piece, Chad. Appreciate the fact that you're talking to the residents. Thank you. Ryland, go ahead. You got your hand up?
Yeah, I was just wondering, because somebody's bound to ask, what would the cost of putting a stoplight be compared to putting a four-way stop in there?
Charlie Jones?
The last one we put in was on Red Cedar Street and South Road. Now that's bigger than this one would be. That was about two hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm guessing probably in the neighborhood of one hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand.
I'm muted, Eric, because I don't.
Okay. Eric, do you have anything to say on this?
I don't on this one. I support this, but I do have a comment on the next intersection over by Elm and Wilson.
Thank you. Any, anything else on the Ninth Street one? Oh, Randy, you got your hand up? Randy Summerfield?
No, I, this is a great idea because it really bottles up there. And then when you're coming down Fourteenth and you need to take a right on the Ninth, you get over next on that lane because it's, you got a turn lane there, and then you got somebody with a big F-250 Ford truck right next to you. You can't see. So now there needs to be some kind of stop sign so that you know when it's your turn to go. And four-way stops is a good way, it's almost like sharing. But people seem to follow them. Okay, well, now it's my turn. Okay, your turn. So I think it's really a good way to manage traffic. I'm for it.
Thank you, Randy. Mary, you've got your hand up?
Is, you know, we're all gonna get tired and feathered if, if we utter the word roundabout out in public. But it might be too late now. But is, is signal lights out of the question?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, no, no, it's, it's not. And yeah, I didn't mean, I didn't, this is Randy, I the Public Works Director. I didn't mean to scare anybody with the roundabout thing. I was trying to say there's, there are several steps to get to that roundabout. It's just an option that the council has if you want to do it. But no, signals are not out of the question. If, you know, if you want to go that way, and, you know, we can keep our eye open for some grant money. It, I, I do think four-way stop is the, is the first step. And maybe that works just fine, and you, we don't have to take any steps beyond that. And, but if it seems like it's backing up and we need to give Ninth a little more north-south flow time, then, then you have a signal at intersection or roundabout to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie. Good questions, Mary, and, and everybody. I think then it looks like, oh, go ahead, Ryland.
Um, I guess, I'm not, you probably don't know off the top of your head, but what would the cost of a roundabout end up being? I'm not a big fan of them. I'll go out of my way to avoid them. But when you're looking at the cost of a roundabout compared to a four-way stop, just wondering estimates there?
The cost of a roundabout is probably slightly more than signals, so I'm saying two hundred to two fifty. There could be some right-of-way acquisition we have to do. You know, you have to widen things out and get into. I, I do think in this situation, they would flow better than traffic signals or a four-way stop because you're gonna let people flow. It's a traffic calming, slow people down on Ninth. So I think in this area, the roundabout would probably, I don't want to scare anybody either. But I think I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Mr. Eddie that it would, could be a good solution to look at long term. I, I just think the, the cost of a four-way stop is by far the most economical solution we can have right now and then look into the future for either signals or a roundabout.
Okay, good discussion. Thank you. And that's what this is on here tonight, is for discussion, to kind of get a feel for how the council feels about this. I think we'll move up to the North Menominee one on Elm and Wilson. And I know Eric had something to say on this. Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hey, listen, but first I'll just, because the roundabout got mentioned over there on Ninth. You know, when I first got, became, you know, when I had to use roundabouts, probably about fifteen years ago overseas, I hated them, and I hated them when I came back as well. But I've gotten better at them, and I, and I do like them. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. There's one person in Menominee at least who likes roundabouts. Right, well, good. And as far as Elm and Wilson there, now that, I know that area well because when I pick up my kids at Wakanda, the only way to avoid McDonald's and Walgreens intersection, which is probably, I think Randy said at one time, the most accident-prone intersection of Menominee, is to push down through here Wilk to Wilson and then come out over there by the dam, you know, and then cross or go, you know, on, on twenty-five either direction from there. But I did notice that intersection, even with the flags, it's easy to kind of blow through that intersection. You're assuming that there's, it's a four-way, but it's not. So I, I do think this is a very hazardous area, and I think a four-way would work very well in this area. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Eric. I know there's been a number of accidents there and a number of concerns. It's been raised to my attention from the neighbors in that area that something needed to be done, and hence it's being put on the agenda tonight to be for discussion. Mr. Summerfield, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I agree with Eric. It just, right now, the, the stop sign on Wilson just seems unnatural. And I, I, so yeah, I, I think a four-way needs to be there.
And Ryland, you've got your hand up?
Um, do we have the option of putting like a rumble strip or something before that stop sign? I don't recall ever seeing one in town, but is that an option for us?
Mr. Eddie?
Sure, surely an option. Ryland, Mr. Mayor, we could, we could look at that. I, I do think a four-way stop would be the next step, just to get that Elm traffic stopping. It, it is kind of a natural feeling coming up north and south on Wilson, and that stop sign just catches you. I think the four-way stop will at least get the Elm traffic stopping so they can look and go. But we can look at a rumble strip. We can surely look at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eddie. Mary, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I had, one of my stops for noon pickup was on Elm. And I had a mother say how incredibly dangerous Elm is because once folks come out of the nursing home or Autumn Village, they, they fly up that, up that road in, like, they're not paying attention. I have had people go through my red light with my bus. They're just simply not paying attention. So something has to happen to make them have to stop and breathe. So I'm all in, in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Leish Webb, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to let Eric know that he's not doing one in town that likes the roundabouts. And being, being, being one of, oh, I guess the oldest person on the council and an old guy in town, I, I really like him. And I, I'm not sure, we're probably getting to the point that maybe we're the only city in Wisconsin that doesn't have one. But if you drive from Roberts up to New Richmond, you go down the, you go down the Madison Country, go to some very ones to see what you see going down, exit that the Dell's going down the variable, you go through them. I mean, it's, they're, they're all over the place. And I, you know, I probably thought we were a little dark that we didn't have one, so.
Wow, so we've got two people in Menominee that like them. I.
That's enough.
Yeah, that's enough. I, I find them kind of interesting because sometimes when my wife is along, I'll just keep going around and around and around until she gets mad at me. So I'm not sure how to, how to feel about it. Mary, you got your hand up? Anybody else? Mary?
It mean to, no.
Okay, you got your hand up there yet? Yeah, so, okay. All right, anything else? Any other discussion on this? I guess it looks to me like we will be moving both of these two forward and bring them back to a subsequent agenda for approval. So I'll have our city attorney draft up those ordinances, and we'll bring them back to you in the future. Thank you for the discussion. Okay, then moving on. We don't have any budget transfers on the new tonight, Lowell, so that's that. Mayor's report, you know, the biggest thing I can say is just keep everybody safe, and, 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 and that's number one, as far as I'm concerned. I don't have a lot to add to that. We have been in contact with the League of Municipalities. I had a really nice visit with the gal from the governor's office Saturday evening, actually. About quarter after night, I got a call from Madison. I wondered who it would be. And here was the Outreach Services lady, Jamie, and she was just working late, contacting a few of the mayors in the area and wanted to just touch base with us. So I, I thought that was really nice that she was thinking of us and, and so on. I know that we've got our hands full. I know the staff has been working quite a lot extra with the on doing the video conferencing for the different meetings and the governor's office and the League of Municipalities and all the other meetings. A, a great majority of them now are held with Zoom or another software that comes over the computer. So I guess just hang in there, everybody, hunker down, and, you know, we're gonna keep everybody involved and in the loop. And by all means, if you have anything that you want to ask of the, of the administration or myself, please don't hesitate to call. I think that's very important. The other thing that I just wanted to add into the communications portion of this was we've got a organizational meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock, and so I'm expecting everybody to be zooming into that meeting. The one thing about this is, the, the caveat is, pretty much the council is all existing council members other than faith. So it would be a lot easier on us if we could, if, if everybody wanted to just stay put in their current capacities and that other than the council president and perhaps the plan commission, those two elements. If we were able to just make a motion encompassing those areas, I think that would be great. But perhaps you can let us know tomorrow sometime. If you've got a, a flavor to serve in a different capacity, maybe you could let Lowell know. Otherwise, it'd be really nice for tomorrow night for convenience sake and to, as far as easeability, to be able to have a motion. And if everybody would serve in the same capacities, I think that would be very useful in this situation. So other than that, I will open it up for communications from council. So Lee, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I have a comment when, just what you're talking about committees. If anybody would love to be on the Larderberry Board, I would not feel bad to give that up.
Okay, Lee was just saying that regarding the library board. And so, and we could talk about this tomorrow night, and, and maybe we could execute the others and then talk about the library board. But if anybody'd like to serve in that capacity, perhaps you could let Lowell know tomorrow, and we could take it from there. Thank you, Lee. Anything else from council? Lowell?
Well, just that you remember at six o'clock tomorrow night, and for those of you that were recently elected, if you want to continue to be elected, we need to have you take the oath before the meeting tomorrow night. So that can be done through the, through this process. But the clerk just needs to witness you've signed your oath of office, which was in your pack, I believe, this, in this last mailing. So if you have those, and Cali will be here tomorrow night, so if you get on a few minutes early, I think there's four of you, probably they're impacted. And then you can just sign that in front of her, and you'll be good to go. We just need them back then at some point in the future, so don't lose them. And again, I think one council member's gonna come up tomorrow morning and take care of theirs, so.
Good.
Just, we need you to sign those before you can take your seat tomorrow night.
Thank you, Mr. Prangie. Anything else from council? How about staff?
We did send out a letter on the, just sent it out to council for your information on potential rate increase on the recycling from the county. So you have that for your information. We just want to let you know what's going on. Ryland's on that committee. We've shared with him earlier, just a little earlier in the day. Not much earlier than the council got it, but that's just something we're working through right now. We did have a, a conference call with the county. There, I believe they're gonna meet again at the end of April and maybe not go with rates that's, that as high as what's in that letter. But we wanted to get our comments on paper. They're doing all videotype meetings also. So it just, I think it's important to write down some of the concerns we have from the staff. And we just wanted to share them with the council, so you, so you know where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie. Any other questions or comments by staff or otherwise?
This is Lowell. If you have questions, again, feel free to, I think we told you, we're trying to explain what's
Correct, correct. Yeah, we'd be, we'd be glad to talk to you about that.
This is Lowell again. We do not have a license list tonight. There was nobody that needed one. So there was a revised claims list sent out in that other earlier afternoon emailing. They had a couple revisions due.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Prangie. So that brings us down to claims. If anybody'd like to make a motion to pay the bills, that would be a good time to do it on the amended claims list. Mary, you've got your hand up? Oh, you're muted?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills on the revised claims list.
Hey, thank you, Mary Solberg. Is there a second to that? Chad, you've got your hand up? Can you give me a voice? Are you muted? Okay, thank you, Chad Slu. Motion made by Mary Solberg, seconded by Chad Slu. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwab?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Slu?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Draxler?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Prangie. And under licenses, we don't have any licenses this evening, so that brings us to a closed session. We need to go in closed session for a few minutes, and I think we're gonna set a time. So I think we're gonna delegate fifteen minutes to that. So at eight-ten, you, if you're participants, or if you want to come back into our closed, our open session at that time, we are gonna now go into our closed session, but with that, I'm gonna need a motion to go into closed. Mr. Eddie, if you want to take it for a second?
Okay, then we'll get the motion second. So just for the publics, I know we have, I see ten, nine attendees in the public there. We're gonna ask you, if the council goes into closed session, they'll do a roll call vote here. We're gonna ask you to leave voluntarily, and then, as the mayor said, return at eight-ten, our local time. And you can come back in. So if you leave, we're gonna lock the webinar just so the council members can be there, and they can have their closed session. Then we'll open it up about eight-ten, and you can come back in. If, if for some reason you, you can't hear me and you're not leaving. we will move you out. The unfortunate thing about moving you out is you cannot come back in, so we, we would like you to voluntarily, just, just, you can remove, remove yourself from the meeting, and then at eight-ten, if you want to come back, you can surely join in at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie. So, Mary, you've got your hand up?
I would make a motion to move into closed session.
And we're gonna do, the first one would be the developers' agreement for Ellsworth Creamery. Mary, you've got your hand up?
I do. I would like to make a motion to approve the developers' agreement between, between the city of Menominee and Ellsworth Cooperative Creamery.
Hey, thank you, and Chad, you've got your hand up?
For a second.
Okay, thank you, the motion's been made by Mary Solberg. Thank you. The motion's been made by Mary Solberg and seconded by Chad Schlue. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Draxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, if anybody'd like to make a motion to accept the real estate tax agreement with the city Menominee and Ellsworth Creamery, Ellsworth Corp. Creamery, now would be the time to do so. Okay, Robin, you've got your hand up?
I make a motion to accept the agreement with Ellsworth Cooperative Creamery on the real estate tax.
Okay, thank you, and Chad, you've got your hand up?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the second, motion made by Robin Sweeney, seconded by Chad Schlue. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Draxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now that would take us to the wastewater collect, collection treatment agreement with the city Menominee and the Ellsworth Cooperative Creamery. If anybody'd like to make a motion to accept that, now would be the time to do so. Okay, Nate, Nate, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the wastewater collective treatment agreement with the Ellsworth Cooperative Creamery.
Okay, and Mary Solberg, you have your hand up?
I would second that motion.
Okay, thank you, and discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Draxler?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, motion passes. I just, in closing, I, I think the last piece of business we have tonight is the motion to adjourn, but meanwhile, I just want to tell everybody to stay safe, and thank you for zooming in tonight. You know, we're gonna get better and better at this. Appreciate everybody's patience. I think Mr. Eddie has graduated now to our senior IT executive, so thank you, Mr. Eddie. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I have something.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Eric.
Yes, just so you folks know, a, a public service announcement. I, I do have electricity now up here on the Meadow Hill Drive, just so that you guys know that, and hang in there, Jeff, that's heading your way.
All right, I will.
One more second.
It came, yeah, it came on, it came on in Ward Two about seven-thirty.
Oh.
Nice.
Word one, we're always last, so.
Well, we're a little more in the dark up there.
We're a little over next word.
So if anybody'd like to make a motion to adjourn, now would be the time to do so. Oh, the other last thing is, before I forget, don't forget tomorrow night, six o'clock, we have the organizational meeting, and we're gonna chime in a little bit early, and don't forget to chime in and have your, be ready to sign in front of Cali, so she can witness that. If you're really, if you're newly re-elected, I should say, for this next term. So with that, Lowell, do you have anything, or Mr. Eddie? No? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? Jeff Luth, you got your hand up?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, Ryland Erdman? Thank you, Ryland. Everybody have a good night, all in favor, signify we're saying aye?
Aye.
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 All right, be safe out there, everybody, and then call the, Paul Lowell, the administrator, tomorrow, if you've got any input for the organization meeting tomorrow night. Otherwise, we'll see you back here, same place, six o'clock, or a little earlier if you need to sign papers. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.